Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we have a, we have a public hearing. Let's start off with classification hearing. I'll read that. Fiscal year 2023 tax classification hearing. The Board of Selectmen will hold a classification hearing at 6:30 PM on Monday, December 5th, 2022. The Board of Selectmen, upon hearing data relevant to the fiscal effects of the available alternatives and upon recommendations made by the assessors, will decide whether the town will continue with one tax rate for all classes of property or multiple, or adopt multiple tax rates. The public is welcome to attend and give comments. And I think we'll open it up with the assessing manager. Julie.
I put a letter, I don't know if you want to read it, Chairman Watson, or you want me to read it, as far as just why we're here.
You can read it.
Okay. This is an annual thing. We do this every year. And we're just here to give some information and let the board decide whether we want to stay with our historical single tax rate or move to a split rate. I gave a package to everybody on the board. And basically, it's just some numbers that we ran showing a potential, not etched in stone, tax rate, what they're predicting as of right now, the Department of Revenue. And the first sheet that you see is the impact of a tax rate shift. And if you go over to the far right with a, with a, a single tax rate, it shows that the average single-family home in Groveland should be paying around $7,737 this year. If we were to shift the rate and put some of the burden on the commercial, it would seriously impact the small businesses, I believe, here in town. You can see if you go across to the left, the impact of the tax bill on the commercial properties in comparison to the impact it would be on the residential properties. So for instance, if you did the 110 shift, the rate for residential would go to 1309, but it would go up to 1450 for commercial. And you can keep going across in the incremental 10% shifts. And it does seriously impact the, the commercial businesses more so than the residential businesses. That's why I gave you this. You just, I don't think in the past we've had anything to kind of compare the rates being shifted. So this is just a little bit, numbers-wise, to see the impact that the, that shift would have on the businesses. And the following sheet is pretty much the same thing, but it does plug in, and this is a Department of Revenue worksheet that they give you. It's like a what-if scenario worksheet, they call it. So if you were to plug in our levy, which we do have the numbers for the levy, and you see that in the second box underneath the top box, that's the rate that it's giving us right now, a single tax rate. And that's, hopefully, will stay there. The values have increased significantly. So that typically will bring the rate down. So if we do do a single rate, it will probably be close to what you're seeing in that box. And then the underneath again shows if we were to shift it, what would happen to the rate for the commercial and industrial properties and for the residential properties. If anybody has any questions about any of that.
Any questions for the assessing manager? Anybody? Kathy? Jason?
No, I don't have any questions, but I definitely want to say thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome.
Because I think being able to talk about it in that type of detail will give people out there watching a better idea of why. Because I know we haven't changed it in years past because we have such a small commercial base.
Yeah, we only have 64 commercial industrial properties, tax-paying properties. So it is, is a really small percentage. I believe it's 6% or 7% of the entire community.
Yeah, so thank you.
You're welcome.
These numbers mean a lot.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I echo Selectman Naves' things. This is really helpful. And I know, we've never had this kind of breakdown before, so it's really helpful for people at home. When you talk about the 110%, you're meaning to put 90% on the residential and then the other 110 would be on the commercial. And because we're, what did you say, 96% residential?
Correct.
That increases the commercial rate dramatically.
It does, yes.
And could possibly cost us commercial businesses in town, which is, I think, historically why the Board of Selectmen has stayed with the single tax rate. So the question I had was, you use median, single-family tax bill. So you're talking about the true statistical median, it's not the mean, it's the median?
Correct. And that's just the single-family residential homes. We didn't do a breakdown of twos, threes, and multiples. That's just, that's just the, because the majority of the town is made up of single-family residents. So that would be the single, yeah.
Correct. Okay. But what is the average single-family house value approximately?
Um, I could do, I could get you the numbers for that. It's similar to the numbers you're seeing there.
Oh, okay. I was just curious how close the mean was to the median.
Yeah, I can, I can do that for you.
The math person in me, Ellen's laughing at me. She's asking the question. I had to. So it's predicting about a 3.5% increase in the tax bill.
That is not etched in stone, but that is the prediction, yes.
Right. Which for this mean house was about $355 for the year.
Correct.
For the year, okay.
Yep, that's all annual.
Okay, yep, annualized. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mark, you got anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Dan?
No questions. Are we going to take this up at some point?
We're going to vote now.
Yeah, tonight.
Oh.
We're going to vote on it tonight.
Oh, well, I'll give my opinions. I mean, I just, we have a hard enough time attracting businesses here. Some people don't want them, some people want them. Most of our tax increases are related to spending new schools, land. Okay? So if people want it to be a bedroom community, they got to pay more. So it's just, you want it all, you pay for it all. I don't think it's fair or responsible to add burdens onto businesses, especially in this economic climate and even in times of prosperity, to shift that burden just because you can. I don't know that all business owners in town even vote if they live here. They can. But if they don't, they're kind of, in many ways, unrepresented in terms of where their tax dollars go. They come here and they, and they might be voiceless. So, you know, I'm one voice, I'm pro-business, and we need more businesses in town that fit within the community, and we should encourage that and develop that. And to raise the tax rate, it doesn't seem to me like you're going to get more bees, you know, with that, you know? So a lower tax rate might be an incentive for businesses to come here where they treat, where they're treated fairly and they know that we want them and appreciate them.
I agree.
Thank you.
Also, too, I just want everybody to remember that the increase in value is solely based on the market and what it's been, you know, the, the increase in the prices that people are paying for houses. That drives our values. So I think that's important for the people at home to know that we don't just choose numbers. They're, they're based on data and they're based on fair market value and sales that have happened in the community. So it's just, I think, another important thing to, to remind the people of.
Yeah, I think that the single rate is the, is the best. Whatever, whatever we can do to help out some of the businesses movement in the Groveland, which, 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 excuse me, helps the, helps the residents. And we need more of it. And I agree that by going more than equal, then you're going to hurt the, you're going to hurt the businesses. And they're, they're hurting, they're hurting as it is. I'm in favor of the single, single rate.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the factor of 1.00 for a single tax rate for the town of Groveland for the next fiscal year.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. We also have to ask, does anybody in the, anybody, a member of the general public want to speak on, in favor of this or not in favor? Yes, sir.
Brad Legos, I live in the town, have business in the town. I think I'm also on the boards to help bring business into the town. I think maybe we should talk about coming down on the business tax. A lot of us here, you know, like Dunn, Baldini, Daniels, myself, we live here as well. So, you know, if you want to bring business into the town, you want to be business-friendly, maybe look at different avenues of taxes instead of raising them or single tax. We have no impact on the schools, we have no impact on infrastructure, trash pickup, plowing. You know, so anything that we do pay, which is, you know, substantial, is a help to the town. So instead of going one tax, why not tear the tax? Benefit to business. I'm in the middle of doing an expansion worth millions of dollars. So, I mean, my tax ante is going to be going significantly up from where it is now. So instead of just jumping the gun saying, let's do one tax, maybe we should talk about, you know, how to bring business in.
Anybody got any questions for Brad Legos?
Yeah, I do.
Don't run away yet.
Don't run away. I hear what you're saying, but every time, you know, something goes up or down, there's a shift. So we also have seniors in town that don't have children in the schools. You know, there's some people that benefit more than others. So I understand that. A lot of it is a timing difference. So I have children in the school department, but when they're out, I will continue to pay real estate taxes and other taxes in perpetuity until I'm not here anymore. So you get, you kind of give back in the big picture. But if, if we reduce the commercial rate, seniors are going to absorb that. It's not just kids that are, are parents like myself that directly benefit from school buses. So, I mean, what do you think about that? I mean, it's, your decrease is somebody else's decrease, so.
Not necessarily. I mean, would.
How would you do that? It'd be fair to, people in town that pay taxes that don't reap all of the benefits of our services.
Well, I think maybe we should put, maybe a pause on it, maybe talk about it or seek some avenues instead of making a vote tonight. I mean, we've got, through, you know, economic development here, I believe, you know, Rebecca, we have a grant going on to see if we can get more business.
I, I think possibly, maybe to entice people to come in. I mean, some towns give tax breaks for a number of years, maybe to entice people to come in. Maybe, maybe that should be looked at. But a permanent decrease in the tax, I don't know that it's sustainable.
I'm not saying permanent, let's, let's get people in.
Get people in.
Let's get people in, let's see how it works. Let's, let's, you know?
Yeah, maybe, you know, get, you know, getting a business in that may, you know, for illustrative purposes, say, bring in, you know, $50,000 a year in real estate taxes, maybe you can give them a discount or, you know, less for a few years to get them, get them going and with a long-term outlook on it that would, would, would benefit in the long run.
I tend to agree.
So in terms of looking at it as an investment for the future, you know what I'm saying?
You know, I don't know how valid it is if you can do that with the size of the business, what the actual revenue would, would bring in, you know, somebody putting a small barbershop or something.
I don't know if it'd be a percentage or something across the board. I don't know. It's something, something to explore, you know, as an incentive to attract businesses here.
Yes, absolutely.
And I understand new businesses, there's higher risk, or maybe you want to, you know, be competitive and instead of them going to, you know, you know, the next town overcome here.
Correct.
Why? The other town might give them, give them a break. I think, I think it's, I think it's legally permitted somehow.
But I also agree, you know, I mean, a lot of the burden's on the residents. And I, you know, given the chance, I don't think everybody wants a sleepy, sleepy town. You know, they don't want problematic businesses, they don't want lead smelting plants.
I understand that.
But you also want to, you know, parents in the town, they shouldn't have to leave the town to go to Newburyport, they should be able to, you know, be able to do something in their own town.
Yeah.
Which you really can't do.
I get it. I'd like to have a 24-hour gas station because I, you know, get home at after midnight, you know? What about the, what about the people on third shift? Shouldn't they be able to stop and get a Slim Jim on the way home at 3:00 in the morning?
Absolutely, Chairman. Is he done? I wanted to speak. Well, whenever he's done, let me know.
I'm sorry, you know? All right? I get it. I, I think it could be looked at and should be looked at.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, Kathy?
Thank you. So I didn't know if you understood that we do have to vote the tax rate tonight, that the prior two tax bills that we send out for the fiscal year are the estimated bills and that we do need to collect the appropriate amount of taxes to pay for the town budget for this year. That's what the purpose of this hearing is. And I hear you and understand where you're coming from. And that kind of discussion can certainly be ongoing through our town administrator and through the business community, but we do need to vote the tax rate this evening in order to secure the funding, to fund our town budget for the year.
Didn't know the vote had to be tonight, so.
Yes, so this is the tax rate hearing. I think, I don't know if everybody on the board understood that, but this is the hearing to set the tax rate. And yes, we do have to vote this evening to set the tax rate so that the next bills can go out on schedule and collect the correct amount of revenue for the town for the next two tax cycles.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, you have anything for?
Yes. That could significantly reduce the amount of taxes that the businesses would pay without a huge increase to taxes across the board for everybody. So I think it's probably something we should definitely look into and discuss for next year. Because if you swing it the other way around, you'd be looking at an increase of 9 cents per thousand versus a decrease to businesses of $1.32 per thousand. Give or take, I just did rough math, so. But that's, that's roughly what you'd be looking at. And I think, I think that may be a really beneficial way to bring more businesses into the town and attract them. So, yeah, I definitely think it's something we should discuss moving forward in the future.
Other stuff we can do in the industrial zone is like, you know, more raise the building envelope. Instead of having 50% impervious surface, go to 75, 80 on a per-case basis, you know, as long as it doesn't impact conservation wetland, you know, stuff like that to entice people to come in as well.
Mark, you got anything for Brad? Thanks for coming in. What you, basically, what you mentioned is what, what I've been saying for years, that you don't see a school bus stop up at our business park on Salem Street, you don't see it stop in front of Chesterton. Businesses is what we need. And maybe you could get together with some of the business owners and tell them, how can we, how can we make it easier and less restrictive for businesses to, to come into the town of Groveland?
You know, through zoning, you know, and also on that board, we're going to.
Well, sit down with them and set something up.
Works both ways, you can do it as well. You know, you could have a little business meeting with some of the, you know, residents' businesses in the town and, you know, guys like us.
I'm sure you guys have got some real good ideas.
We should sit down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the public, any comment, for or against? None. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Unfortunately, it's, we're pressed to vote on it now. It probably should, in hindsight, been brought up previously, so maybe we'd have time for discussions on your point. So maybe we can plant the seed for next year, but right now, we have to set the rate. So I wish I had the foresight to see this coming and, you know, so we.
Anybody else in discussion? None. We're ready for a vote, a motion and a second. All in favor of the single rate system? Unanimous. Thank you. And thanks to the assessing manager. Nice job. All right, moving on. Public comment? We didn't have any unless somebody indicated to you, Rebecca? No. Approval of warrant. Jason, do you have the, the warrant?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant 23 and the amount of $209,864.42.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? None? All in favor? Unanimous. Bill Warrant?
I'll make a motion to approve bill warrant 23, 23, and the amount of $1,578,995.26, which breaks down to the town of $33,138.3. Water and sewer, $81,322.58. Payroll withholding, $38,878.4. Light bills, $172,122.33. Grants and revolving, $125,307.36. Kentucky assessment for $1,032,639.92. Essex Tech assessment, $95,587.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? None? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Jason. No minutes. Complaints aboard none, votes of the board, down due discussion and possible vote. Town by, administrative bylaw, Joe Demore. I don't see Joe here. Does he come?
It's shared with him on the agenda.
Hmm? He's on the agenda?
Yep.
And I don't see Dr. Osborne here either. All right, and then subheading, disband town government study committee. Dan, you, you asked that to be put on.
Yes, I did, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Joe Demore came to the last meeting, I believe, and something to do with further modifications to our adoption of a town administrator. Well, the committee studied the need for a town administrator, it went to town meeting. They did not adopt the draft bylaw that was presented on the website at town meeting or in the Warren article that was presented at town meeting. I believe we went with the statutory language in the town administrator. So I think their, their job is done. We have a town administrator now. My personal opinion, I don't speak for the board on this, unless you agree with me, I don't want them tinkering with that. I don't want the town administrator to be modified or the authority of the town administrator to be modified to a quasi-town manager. That wasn't, not what was sold to the town, and I think we leave it alone and let's just see how it plays out. Town administrator is doing a great job, so far, so good. And I'd just like to see how it works its way through over the next three years, through several years until, you know, we see how it works and whether or not there's a need to make any further amendments to the default statute under the law. So I think their job's done, unless they have an agenda that they want to portion, they want to present it to us. I see it as beyond the scope of that committee and it, thank you for their effort, but it's time to disband it.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Jason, go ahead.
The default is just in place to allow a town to switch quickly. The, the bylaw is there to really define what the town administrator can and cannot do. And without that, I think it leaves a lot of confusion among the employees who expect a lot more than what the current town administrator can do, which creates a lot of strife and separation among the employees. So I think it's something that needs to be done. We need to define it and really solidify the position and what that's going to look like for Groveland. Without having that position defined and only utilizing the default, it will prevent us from moving forward and recruiting eligible people for a lot of positions, and it will continue to increase the strife at town hall and prevent people from coming together and getting behind the town administrator because she can't do what they expect. And it puts a lot of pressure on us to do a lot when we only meet every other week. And it's not fair to the employees or to the town administrator to operate in that fashion.
Okay, anybody else? Kathy?
Yes, I'm going to speak to this. First of all, I think the fact that Dr. Osborne and Joe Demore were willing to come in and speak to us about this is to be appreciated. And I think the addition of a line item under their, their request to come before us that was put forward by one member of the board, Selectman McDonald, to dismantle the town government committee is perhaps the reason why they're not here tonight. Because if I was in their shoes and I was willing to volunteer to help out my town and I called in and said, hey, I'd like to come in and talk to the Board of Selectmen about the government study committee, and I tried to pull a fast when they just wanted to come in and speak with us. And a member of the select board then put under that, make sure we disband this committee, I would probably look at the agenda and say, why should I bother to come in? They're just going to disband us. They don't want to hear what we have to say. And I think when the Board of Selectmen stops listening to the people of the town, that's kind of a sad statement. I also want to point out very important facts here that, at the time we adopted the Mass General Law, they allowed us to create the town administrator bylaw, we had a lot of discussion, especially under Chairman Dunn, regarding the town administrator position, regarding the responsibilities and duties of it, regarding how this, this position would best fit within our town and best be able to help our town become more effective and more efficient. But we also pointed out that there would be a transition period, a time where we would have still the finance director bylaw in place, giving all those responsibilities to the finance director. So during the transition year, the town administrator was also the finance director. So we needed to let the finance director bylaw be rescinded at the state level through legislature before we could go forward with any type of bylaw. Selectman McDonald misspoke to some degree when he said that the town meeting did not adopt the bylaw. They never reviewed the bylaw, they were never presented with the bylaw because we knew that this could not be done while we still operated under the finance director bylaw, which set up certain departments, chain of responsibility and everything. And now, yes, it's time to start to take note of how much the town administrator position is bringing to the town and put together a group of citizens to bring us to the next step, which, if we're not going to do a charter commission, which I thought we weren't, we would, we've done most of our changes in Groveland through bylaw, which allows full citizen participation, full town meeting participation. It's, it's an all-encompassing process, it lets everybody weigh in on it. And I think this is a good time to, to say yes to some volunteers and, and let them start to look at it. I don't think that it will be ready to go forward this town meeting, but that's fine. I think there's nothing wrong with volunteers who come forward and ask to help the town move itself forward and help our government structure move forward. So I'm in favor of saying yes to our volunteers, and I think we all know that we needed the transition year to rescind the other bylaws. So to me, it's, it's just stupid not to go to the next step. It's just a very stupid move of town government not to say, hey, we need to look at this position and make a determination of how it fits within Groveland's structure, within what we have. You know, we have our enterprise water and sewer department, we have unique features that other towns don't have, okay? We have a municipal light department. You need to, to see how this should fit and work. And I think that discussion and debate and hearing opinions of people outside our board is a great thing, and we should do it.
Mr. Chair?
Chief Mark said anything? Nope. Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, I like to rebut what stupid is and what stupid isn't. I think it's hasty and it's premature to proceed with this. If you want to, if you don't want to disband the committee, all right, I do respect them and I don't want to waste their time, okay? We negotiated a three-year contract with our town administrator, and if you change your roles and duties, we, we might have to renegotiate that contract, okay? So Rebecca's input's important, and, you know, if, if they want to keep it going and talk, I still think it's premature. You know, Kathy said it's not going to be ready for this town meeting, so if they want to work on it. But Joe Demore was in here and he's not here to. But Joe Demore was in here, and he's not here to, uh, defend himself in any way, uh, but, you know, what he said was, he, if, if we don't, it's up to the effect that if, 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 he'll get a, a citizen's petition going for this town meeting. So, I don't know that it's not going to be at town meeting if they go that route on a citizen's petition, so... Because I think it's premature, I don't think they should waste their time, unless they want to, because what I consider a waste of time might be somebody's, you know, concerted effort, and they, and they value it, they want to proceed. I don't make decisions for people, but that's my, that's my position.
Um, anybody else? Jason?
No, I think, uh, I think what Joe said last time was that, uh, they had completed it, and now it was up to us to go through it. Um, and I don't think it's premature for us to discuss it, to pick it apart and make decisions on what we think is going to be best for Groveland. Um, so I don't think it would be hasty to start looking at that and, and discussing it amongst us at a, at a meeting, so we can start making those decisions, because it's just going to be a timely process. It's not something that's going to be ready and, and in place in the next year or two. It's going to take time, and if we don't start that process now, we're going to end up losing and not being prepared for the future.
Okay, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Fair, fair enough, uh, Jason, uh, but, I, I, that wasn't my takeaway. He wants it for town meeting with a citizen's petition. My sense was that if we're not going to do it, they'll do it on their own. So, so, if they're listening, they got their answer, it's not going to be ready.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Um, yes, just... A citizen's petition might be the only answer if this board doesn't start getting involved and listening to its citizens. Selectman McDonald openly opposed the creation of this position at the town meeting, and has freedom of speech, entitled to his opinion, but now that the town has openly embraced this position, um, it's time for this board to come together and support the creation of a bylaw that supports this position and ensures its, ensures its success within our town government. To do nothing and say it's premature is just, in my opinion, a stalling tactic that serves no public good at this juncture. Um, these kind of tasks usually take months, not weeks, because a bylaw change is a big deal, and I want to make sure that we don't just review it on this board, that we allow for citizen input, that we allow for our town departments to have input. The, the process takes a while, and most changes I've seen within Groveland do take a couple of years to bring to a town meeting vote, and that's why I think this would be the time to start it and let it get going, and not try to rush it to a town meeting. Let people have time with it, and let the public have time to comment on it, as well as members of this board. Let all the members of the board have, really have the time they need to read through this document, whatever it might look like right now, I don't know, um, and then start the process of, of considering whether or not this would be helpful to the town and helpful to our town departments.
Okay, uh, Rebecca, do you have at your fingertips the, uh, original adoption of the, uh, committee? I know, I know you had read out before, uh, the, 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 uh, the makeup of the board, the, uh, of the, uh, uh, study committee. Do you have the, do you have that paperwork?
So, I included in your packet the, um, essential functions as defined and adopted by the Board of Selectmen at the creation of such?
I didn't get that. I got to know.
Not the membership. Did we, did we reappoint them, though?
Uh, essential function of the committee are to produce data, information, and actionable steps for voters to evaluate the need for changing town government functions. To define the duties of said position, costs associated with the proposed change, and any other ancillary positions that may be required as a result of the change. To champion seven public participation activities, to lead the town to decide, study group, survey, informational meetings, annual town meeting, ballot question if necessary, state house hearing, publicly available resources. That was, thank you, Mike. That was the, uh, that was what the, the purpose of it. It sounds to me like everything that's right out there has been covered, and, uh... I, I, I'm going to support, uh, Selectman McDonald that, uh, they're, they did all those functions, they did most of them, uh, and, uh, I think it's time to turn it back to the, to the Board of Selectmen, as was said. I think it was Joe was the last meeting, maybe the meeting before, that, uh, basically if the Board of Selectmen don't do it, that, uh, they'll do a citizen's petition. So, I think the impetus is on us, uh, and I, I'll, I'll, I'll support, I'll support the disbanding of the committee. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Yes, um, I, I disagree with disbanding the committee. These are the people that did all the research and put the document together, so I think as a, as a courtesy to the group, you don't disband them and say, "Thanks, get out of here." You include them in the process, because we might have questions for them. I haven't seen any new document that they may have developed, but if I did, I would want to ask questions from the group that put that document together, you know, as I'm trying to understand and, and think about what this document is. What you just read defined what their task would be, to define the duties of the position. And this is what we did when we created the Department of Finance over about thirty years ago. Um, we did take the time, we did have a task group, we did define the job description of the finance director, we defined the departments that were formed as a finance department. All of this was new to the town, um, but it overall benefited the town and allowed our town to grow and improve their financial management. And now we've made the next step to a town administrator, because it was realized along the way that we were continually dumping administrative duties onto the financial director of the town. And so, this, the financial director position sort of evolved into now a town administrator, and our accountant has increased hours to take on more of the financial management function. Um, we have grown, we are, complexity of the work that's being done has grown, and in order for this to endure, it needs to have a proper structure around it. You don't want a brand-new Board of Selectmen to, to negotiate a new contract and give a town administrator some job three days a week doing half as much work. That's what could happen right now, because there's no structure here that demands that the town administrator perform certain functions in this town. I mean, we're lucky that our first pick has exceeded our expectations and definitely exceeds the amount of hours she's supposed to work every single week. But it could have gone the other way i- if we had made a wrong choice, and we would then have very little to, to negotiate with, except what we put in that contract. So, right now, this whole position is defined by Mass General Law, yes, but defined in a contract that exists for just three years. So, if we want to create something that endures, like we did when we created the finance department and the financial director, we need to have a task group that assists with the process. The, the Board of Selectmen, we're snowed under. We, we meet twice a month, we have very little time to review the materials that we get to review, so we often table things to review them at the next meeting, you've seen that, because it takes us time to go through this and understand it all. So, when volunteers from the town who have done incredibly great work in the past come forward and say they'd like to do some more work, I'm like, "Sure, please, thank you very much, let's see." It's not to say they can go run off and do everything on their own. They'll bring it to us, they want to include us in the process. That's why they asked to come before us tonight, so I say we don't disband them, and we include them in the process.
Okay, anybody else? Jason?
Yeah, because I know that they did complete most of what they were chartered to do, so in that I do agree with you. But the one thing that's not complete is us going through it, making the necessary changes that we feel is necessary, and getting their input on what we changed and why it would be acceptable or unacceptable. And that sounding board is important.
Okay. Dan?
Yeah, I just, we, we negotiated a three-year contract with our town administrator. Her, uh, duties, uh, and, uh, obligations, and, and the town's obligations, uh, and return for those services is, uh, defined in contract, and, uh, we have guidelines. So, we're not just, uh, blowing in the wind here, um, and, uh, you know, let's just see how it plays out. If there's, uh, a, a need for change, we can, uh, get feedback from, um, uh, Rebecca. If, uh, she feels like, uh, she needs, um, more authority, or, or maybe less authority, or some sort of, um, uh, changing of the gears, um, the Board of Selectmen is apt to make, uh, those changes, and we should abide by the contract with her. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we, uh, terminate the town government study committee, and, uh, I thank them for, uh, you know, a job well done.
Okay, motion, a second? I'll, I'll, I'll second that. Uh, any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm going to point out a, a really clear example of why we need to look at what the responsibilities are. Every meeting, you watch us read the warrants and we vote them, but we don't review them. I haven't seen, except for Jason and I, on occasion, a single member from this table review those bills. I know the accountant reviews them, I know the town administrator does, the treasurer, I know the financial staff does. So, it's as if we're taking credit for work we didn't do. So, who's really responsible for approving the warrant and making sure it's, um, correct, and there's nothing in there that shouldn't be? Shouldn't that responsibility fall to the town administrator to sign off and say that this is correct? Instead, it's the Board of Selectmen. So, if there's something in there that we don't like or don't want because of personal reasons, we can shut it down. Shouldn't this be transparent? Shouldn't it be the people who are actually doing the reviewing who are approving that warrant?
Could you, could you explain?
I have a question.
Hold on. Could you explain what that has to do with, what you just said with the, with the, uh, town government?
Certainly, because one of the proposals, if you read the original thing, had to do with the approval of the warrant process, and initially I was kind of opposed to that change, because I thought, "Well, the Board of Selectmen, we're the check and balance." But as I've sat here over the past few years, and I realize how many things we have to review, and how little time we have to go through that level of detail, I can't honestly tell you that I know for sure that every bill in the pile is correct, but I do trust that our town administrator knows that for sure, as does our accountant. Okay, so we do have a check and balance system, but we're not giving them the authority to do that. We're, we're still sitting here in between it, kind of, and I'm thinking, we're an executive board, we can only review so much and be certain of it. So, we should just get the variance report and the final report of those expenditures. If we see anything that looks out of alignment, then we ask our questions. But right now, we're just blindly, at the beginning of every agenda, voting these bills and these warrants, without reviewing them.
Okay. You, uh, hold on.
Stephanie Bartel.
Identify yourself and...
Stephanie Bartel, Eighteen Chestnut Street, and I guess I just want to clarify the reason for disbanding, uh, Citizen Task Force, and what the way forward would be without them? Like, what, what, what would the big picture be without them, when it seems like we do need, um, their input? Thank you.
Okay, Mark?
Um, I just, this has all started before I be, you know, got on to the board, so I'm just... I would like to just put it off at least one more week, so I can just, you know, do my research and understand it a little bit better.
Okay.
Just my opinion.
Do you want to make a motion to table?
Uh, yes, if I could, please.
A second now.
Motion to table and a second. Uh, all in favor of, uh, tabling?
I'll agree to it.
In unanimous. Thank you. And it's tabled? Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, go ahead.
Just to point a clarity, you said Citizens Task Force? Is that what it's called?
Yeah, well, no.
It says citizen-run task force, correct?
Well, that, that might be jargon, but it's, it's officially the Town Government Study Committee. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next was, uh, Nelson Street Storage Conservation Restrictions, Brad Legos and the Conservation Commission. And we have the paperwork here. Mike, you want to, uh, uh, give us just a quick rundown, and then Brad will, uh, will hear from you?
Mike Dempsey for the Conservation Commission, um, so...
Are you new in town? Are you new in town?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we've been through this, uh, before. You, I think the board understands about conservation restrictions. However, this conservation restriction is different than any other one that you've been asked to approve in that this conservation is being held by the Groveland Conservation Commission and not the other way around. Normally, we've reviewed two other types. One is that the town has a property that's required to have a CR on it, and we have a third party such as Essex County Green Belt, and they hold the conservation restriction, which means they enforce it. Uh, the other type that we did have was where two other parties in the town wasn't involved at all, only that the property was in our town, and you had to approve it. This is the third type, in that the Conservation Commission will be charged with enforcing the terms of the conservation restriction. This CR is being required by the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Act for a, uh, commercial developer, Mr. Legos, that is building something within habitat area. And typically, what natural heritage does is negotiate with the owner, and one of the things they often ask is to put a, a conservation restriction on a portion of the land. So, um, that's what they've done. There's a very small portion of the overall, uh, parcel of land where the development is going to take place that will be set aside, will not be able to be built upon, uh, needs to be protected by, uh, the owner of the property, and as I say, it'll be up to the commission to enforce the terms of the CR. And so, your job tonight is really to okay that. I don't completely understand, uh, why the state requires a vote of the selectmen in a case like this, but it is.
Thank you. We, we received a, uh, a letter from the, dealing with the conservation restriction at Eight Thirty-Three Salem Street, from the Town Planner and Environmental Program Coordinator. Somebody want to read that? Can you read that, uh, Jason?
You are receiving this information pack because the owner of Eight Thirty-Three Salem Street is in the permitting process to create a self-storage facility at Eight Thirty-Three Salem Street. Much of this lot is priority habitat for the endangered Landings Turtle. And because of that, permit from the National Heritage of Endangered Species Program is required. Part of their requirement is to receive a permit, is to place a portion of the property in conservation restriction to protect the turtle habitat. The Conservation Commission November meeting, the commission voted to hold the CR for the one-point-seven acres of the land for the purpose of habitation, habitat protection. Please find the letter with the exact motion within this packet. As the CR is responsible, is the purpose of habitat protection. The only additional work for the commission will be, will have to partake in this, and is a five-year report, which will certify there has been no encroachment to the restricted area. The area will not be accessible to the public. If you have any questions, feel free, feel free to reach out to the office.
Thank you. You want to hear from Brad first, and then we'll, uh, we'll, we'll get any questions for you, Mike, and Brad? Thank you. Brad? Brad Legos?
Yeah, doing my part for the taxes.
Yes.
It's basically, I couldn't have said any better than Mike or Annie, explained it in the letter. So, it's priority habitat. We already went for a conditional no-take with, um, national heritage. This right now is just a formality. This right now is just a formality. Putting 1.7 acres into conservation restriction. Can't touch it, can't use it, can't take trees down.
Now, where is the entrance on Salem Street going to be located?
Where the house is now, to the left of the house.
Okay.
The site plan's going into zoning. We'll have some kind of a site plan on Wednesday. We're going to go to the planning board probably in hopefully three or four weeks. So I believe the house is coming down. The entrance is going to come off of Salem Street. It's basically an expansion of what's on Nelson Street now, Groveland self-storage. Going to add more units, drive-up climate control.
Looks like it's going to like triple the size of what you've got there now.
We'll see how it goes. We're going to do it in phases.
Thank you. Any questions for either Brad or Mike Dempsey? Dan, go ahead.
So you support this measure?
Yes, yep. I would love to see it no habitat, but, you know, we did a study.
What could we do to get rid of the red tape?
Get rid of National Heritage.
Conservation Commission?
Conservation Commission was fine.
Okay, I mean, you know.
They were mendable to this.
Anybody else? Kathy?
Well, what exactly is the vote that we have to take?
It looks like we have to vote the conservation restriction. And I believe in the paperwork, it said, you find a letter with the exact motion within this information packet.
That's the motion that the Conservation Commission made? That she's just telling us that we have the motion that they made, and the evidence that they voted it. So is the vote just to accept the conservation restriction? Or are we just voting to support it? What are we doing here?
I would think what the support, what Conservation came up with.
Okay, so we'll approve the Groveland Conservation Commission holding this CR. That's it?
Mike, does that have to go to a town meeting vote? The conservation restriction does not? Okay. All right. Thank you, Brad. Anybody else got any questions?
Yeah, can I, can I vote with a qualified vote? Because, you know, I'm not for the restrictions, but in this case, I think you stock.
It's a conditional no-take, so it's probably the best outcome I could have.
There you go.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the conservation restriction as presented to us tonight by the Conservation Commission.
Okay, and I think we ought to add 833 Salem Street.
Add 833 Salem Street.
Is there a second on that? Jason, thank you. Any other comments? None. Ready for vote? Motion, second, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Brad.
If you'd like to see anybody else, you can get an email. My co-committee also, probably John Christopher, because we have to put that in.
I think that could be a ring. Mike, is that something that you can handle?
We have the letter, but we're going to also need John out as well. That's, you know, to show National Heritage to affirm it. We will have to, you know, again, go to Salem D with it.
No, you can work that out with Conservation.
We'll make a motion to allow the chairman to sign on behalf of the board.
Okay. Is there a second? Mark, second. Discussion, none, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan. And we have that in our packet. And, did you want to start? Town accountant?
I'll start.
Rebecca, you want to do that?
So essentially, at the last meeting, we had proposed a list of items that were requested by the departments for funding over the next few fiscal years, the next five fiscal years. We went back and we had conversations with the departments. And then I also had a meeting with both the town accountant and the treasurer-collector in terms of deciding or proposing different strategies in terms of actually funding those projects and making those come to fruition. So before you on your packet, we prepared three different scenarios based upon the funding sources as you see. The first scenario does not take into consideration the use of the bond premiums or the sale of the town building. The second scenario takes into consideration using the bond premiums. And then the third scenario that you see takes into consideration also using the proceeds from the sale of the town building. And essentially, it's just a way to try and figure out exactly what funding scenario would be in the best interest of the town moving forward. As we see interest rates right now, and because of the economy, we are not recommending that we take on any additional debt or do any more borrowing for this fiscal year. In the future, we will need to reevaluate that based upon the interest rates as they hopefully come down. So we do have projects that are lined up in the future that will require us to go out to bond. Specifically, there's some larger projects such as the roof repair over at the Public Safety Building, as well as the roof repair here and over at the library. So things that we'll need to take into consideration when we're reevaluating the projects in the future. But for the interim, after speaking with the departments and taking a look at the funding sources and the level of funding that we have available to us, we have provided those three scenarios for your consideration and review.
Okay, any questions for Rebecca? Anybody?
No, I do. Can you give us, and the viewers, the people of this town, a summary of each of the three scenarios? And do you have any recommendations to this board on any of them? Or can you address the pros and cons of each of them?
Of course. So the projects as we defined at one of the first meetings that we had our discussion on was the cruiser that we specifically, or historically have provided to the police department, the Jaws for the fire department, the library floor, the library HVAC. As we had discussed, those two projects kind of go hand-in-hand based upon an issue that we found ourselves in with an undersized HVAC unit. The cafeteria door and the Bag Now 911 system over at the elementary school, as well as the oil tank removal. And then the trackless tractor that is being proposed for the highway department based upon their needs that they find with the trail and some other community maintenance needs. So the first scenario that you'll see is to, well, actually, one of the things I was going to mention in the town administrative time is we actually had our free cash certified. Thank you to the town accountant for all of her hard work on doing that. So the number that you'll see is the certified free cash number that was approved by DOR for the $691,453. So the scenario one takes into consideration using about $130,000 of that to go towards the project, to offset the price for the project, using no stabilization money and using no capital stabilization monies. Those accounts currently, you'll see about $1.3 million in our stabilization fund. And in our capital, we should have about $340,000. We don't feel as though that those accounts necessarily at this point in time should be touched. We would like to add more to those accounts before we need to tap into those. And we find that the free cash is more than it has been in the last few fiscal years, so it would be enough to help cover some of those more immediate capital needs that's being proposed. Then it also takes into consideration scenario one, using about $124,000 for, excuse me, leaving about $124,000 in the account from our balance of $415,000 currently with the monies that we've allocated for those projects. Some of them have been completed, not all of them have been completed. So there is a little bit of a contingency built into those projects that are outstanding. And then that scenario one does not utilize the bond premiums for $3,000 or the bond premium for $41,000, and does not utilize the proceeds from the sale of a town building at $84,000, bringing the total to, for the, for scenario one being for the $851,486 for the project total. And then scenario two takes into consideration actually using the bond premiums. And the reason that this scenario, so it's using the same amount of certified free cash, not touching stabilization either general or capital, and then it's using the same amount of American Rescue Funds. But the difference is the fact that we're offsetting it with the bond premiums. And essentially, those can be used on capital projects. They're not increasing, they're not generating any interest, they're not generating any more monies, they're just sitting there. So they're just sitting there and they're ready to be used. So it offsets the cost of some of the projects and leaves more remaining funds in the American Rescue Funds, which the Board of Selectmen has the ability, more flexibility to utilize as opposed to going to town meeting and voting on such for capital improvement projects. And then the third scenario takes into consideration using additional monies from the sale of lots and offsetting that cost as well, and leaves about $29,000 in the original $84,000, and gives us about $224,000 remaining in American Rescue Funds to be used by the Board of Selectmen.
Question for Rebecca. Dan, you ask?
Yeah, so forgive me if I missed it, but what is the balance of the bond premiums at the moment?
So there's two. There's one for $3,041, and then there's the one for $41,913.
You did say that. So they just sit there? That's basically what the, the delta between the rate on the face of the bonds and whether or not the market's higher or lower?
It just sits there. There's no accrued interest, there's nothing. There's just monies that we didn't use.
Okay. With, with rise in interest rates, does that bond premium erode? Or it's already earned?
It's already earned from my understanding. I don't know if the town accountant can speak to that, but that's my understanding.
It doesn't erode. It's past performance? Okay. Because, you know, just curious, afraid to hire, right?
And that's why we thought...
Who would want to buy your 2% note if they're paying four?
And that's why we thought...
Seems like a discount situation to me.
That we'd offset the cost in scenario two to show you that we could, you know, actually use those for something such as a capital need instead of dipping into other funding sources.
We need them for future scenarios where we might have a discount situation on a note. We're not going to refi them out so it doesn't matter?
Yes.
Is that? We're not going to refi them out, not going to prepay them. We're not going to refi the notes or anything, so we don't care about discounting a note? Do any of these scenarios have any purchases of land in them?
Nope.
It's just safety and basically overhead infrastructural needs?
Yep, so the trackless tractor, the Jaws for the fire department, the cruiser for the police department, library floor, library HVAC. Over at the Bag Now, we're talking about the cafeteria door replacement for safety, security lockdown reasons, the Bag Now 911 system, and then removing an oil tank that's currently on-site that we have to service, but is not being used. So it's just draining monies from our funds in order to have something on-site serviced that doesn't serve a purpose.
So is scenario one favorable over two and three?
My recommendation would be scenario two or three in using those unused bond premiums for offsetting the capital costs.
And that would free up cash to do what?
Whatever the Board of Selectmen would like to do. If it frees up cash in the ARPA, it's under the Board of Selectmen's control.
Can we put it in stabilization? Because we're...
You can't use ARPA funds for stabilization. It's in annulable use. So it frees up more monies for more capital projects down the road.
And how soon do we need to make this decision? Because I don't know that we've decided on what to use those funds for, or if it's, I mean, it needs to be foreseeable because we have a timeline on it. So at what point do you think that we could make the decision? And does this have to be done now?
So the ARPA funds have until 2024 to be allocated, and then 2026 to be expended. So that gives you a little bit more time in terms of determining whether or not you would like to use those funds for capital needs or for other needs that qualify. However, in terms of the capital plan, it's important for us to have an approved capital plan moving forward so that we can go through the budgeting process and prevent them being to town meeting. So we could get another meeting or two potentially, if you'd like to take a little bit more time. But I wouldn't recommend going past that.
All right, just one more question, Mr. Chair, if I could. So is your preference to use the bond premiums because they are less restricted than the ARPA funds? Is that the flexibility of the use of those funds?
The bond premiums, I just see them as money that's sitting there that nobody's utilizing and can serve a purpose of offsetting the capital cost that we currently have before us, freeing up the ability to maximize our monies to spend elsewhere.
But we could use those for just operating expenses and shortfalls in the budget and line items?
Not the unused bond premiums.
No, so they are restricted?
Yes.
Can you define what the parameters are? Because I don't know on that. Appreciate it.
So it's per Chapter 44, Section 20, unused bond premiums under $50,000 can be voted to be used at annual town meeting for a capital item with an equal or greater to useful life. And that's why we have two figures. One is associated with five years and the other 20 years. And I think that Ellen can specify, but I believe one is for the fire truck and the other is for the...
Five years can be used for five or more. So kind of use anything on that? Because it would be the 40,000, that's to be used for 20?
For 20 years, yeah, 20-year lifespan. So there's five years and 20 years.
Okay, thank you. Answer my question.
Thank you. Anybody else? Kathy?
Yes. First of all, thank you. This is the first time I've seen the capital plan presented in such a concise and informative format. And I thank you for that. Because usually, we get a pile of paper and a long list of items that cost money, and we don't think about how to pay for it until after we pick and choose. And then all of a sudden, we find out we don't have the money. So let me make sure I'm understanding it right. As I go across the columns, the numbers that I see like under scenario one, would that be the amount remaining in that fund under scenario one?
Yes.
Okay. So, so in scenario one, we're using more of the American Rescue Funds than we are in scenario three? Am I understanding that right?
Correct.
Okay. But we are using the bond premiums... No, we're not in scenario. So in scenario one, I get it now. So you're using the bond premiums, scenario two and three, thereby increasing the amount left in the American Rescue Funds, which allows us more flexibility because we don't need to go to a town meeting to appropriate those funds?
Yes.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. And looking between scenario two and scenario three, are you indifferent between those scenarios? Or do you feel that there's a point that will end up? But we don't, I know in your policies, you recommend for a capital committee. But at present, as you know, we're operating as the capital committee, doing the best we can. But we don't tend to review those capital needs as thoroughly as a capital committee would. So do you anticipate us doing that degree of research? Or are you going to do that for us?
I've been working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Working with both the town accountant and the town treasurer to identify and talk that through and have those meaningful conversations.
Okay, so we can sort of just lean towards the scenario two and then wait to hear back from you and the financial team as well as the recommendations of the financial board? Is that what you're thinking at this point?
We can do that. That's an option.
I mean, that's what I would like to do. I like, I like the idea of leaving more in the American Rescue Funds placement just because it does give us flexibility if something, if large happens, we can react to it in real time within a select board meeting and not have to wait for the once-a-year annual town meeting. And we do have plenty of time to allocate those funds. And we don't have to expend them till 2026, right?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, so I like this. I love this format. I think it puts us in a much better position for making this decision because we now understand what these capital purchases do to town reserves. This is without fault. It's the best work I've seen in years. Thank you.
Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, I see here it says that the proceeds from the sale of town building can be voted to be used at annual town meeting for a capital item with a useful life of five years or greater. Does that mean if it's not used and it's sitting there, it's not earning any money?
So that one does earn money. So there is, it's in a bank account and there's an interest that's accrued.
And a regular bank account or high interest?
Regular.
It's invested? Okay.
Thank you. Mark?
No, I think scenario two's pretty good.
It's a pleasure. Oh, well, take a vote on... Oh, well, take a vote on one of the scenarios or, or, uh, take a look at it, uh, at another time.
Would it be timely, uh, next meeting, Rebecca?
I think it's at the December nineteenth, I believe it is.
Yeah. Chad, like to table it for another meeting, uh, just so I can read it more carefully.
Okay, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is it a second?
Seconded.
Motion and a second to table it. Home in favor of tabling? Unanimous, thank you. And then we have, uh, next up is financial policies. And we got quite a bit of paperwork on that, Rebecca, you want a little, uh, back to that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so these are the financial policies that were before you at the last meeting. I know that Selectman McDonald had some concerns about the use of May versus the use of Shall. Um, and going back over the financial policies, um, I don't know specifically where it really, um, puts a burden on the town to commit. There are certain things under the anti-fraud section that obviously, you know, you, you shall not steal kinda thing where that makes a lot of sense, but then there's other types of areas that it really tries to give you guidance. Um, the town will strive to maintain, um, the town will work to, um, it doesn't necessarily restrict the town and say that the town has to do anything, um, it just provides us a little guidance. We are going through our audit, the auditors are here this week. It would be really great to present to them, um, an adopted financial policies, it would remove some of the comments that we have in our financial report. We did just schedule our review with Rudy's, our rating review, and this would also look really good for the town. And it really is just a great tool for us to have internally as we go through, um, the process of, you know, capital planning and reconciling and year-end and have something to keep us honest and, and, and make sure that we're following the proper steps.
Question for Rebecca?
Response.
Dan, go ahead.
I'm not against the word Shall, you know, Ten Commandments, they're good. Uh, I think that one of the Shals, I might've been looking at the other procedures, so apologize for that, didn't mean to send you on a wild goose chase, but yeah, I mean, they're policies, you know, be honest, you know? Um, we need internal controls, the auditors for bond ratings, et cetera, I'm in favor of that, appreciate it.
Anybody else, Kathy?
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the Board, I'd like to make a motion to accept these financial policies as presented by the town administrator on this date.
Is there a motion? Is there a second, Jason? Uh, any further discussion? None, ready for a vote? Home in favor? Unanimous, thank you, thank you for the preparation of that. Okay, uh... Implement, implement a fee for the dog parks like a McDonald, Dan you asked to have this put on the agenda?
And then discussion, you know, when the dog park's gonna come into play and, uh, typically I'm not a, you know, a fee guy, you know? Shanahan Soccer Field, et cetera, I voted against some of those things, but, uh, you know, I just, uh, I wanted it to be discussed. Um, you know, I don't know, um, if it was in the budget, uh, anticipated, who's gonna maintain the dog park? Um, uh, there are some concerns from some residents whether or not, um, you know, we're gonna get, you know, dogs from other towns and, so, um, you know, I wanted to bring it up. Uh, I mean, maybe there's, um, if we don't have, uh, maintenance, uh, uh, money budgeted, um, maybe we have a, um, you know, a permit for the use of it for a season or something like that, a user fee so that they can clean it, break it up. I mean, I don't know that it's, uh, a self-cleaning type of situation, maybe someone can, uh, set me straight on that. But, um, you know, the other thing is of the dogs that maybe come into town or, or even residents' dogs, I mean, how do we know they have, um, rabies shots, so, you know? I'm, uh, reluctant to have more red tape, uh, but how do we know the dogs have vaccinations and, uh, dog tags and, uh, that are gonna use the, uh, use the playground? So I have, I have more questions than answers, but, uh, I thought I'd, uh, bring it up for discussion.
Hey, anybody else, Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, I can answer some of those questions. I know when I first, um, started looking into doing a dog park, I was pushing heavily for an annual fee for the dog park. Uh, the biggest reason is maintenance, because the dog park that we have is only maintained by the, uh, people that use it. Um, we do have a lot of dogs from out of town and I know that the police chief, um, would love to have all the dogs registered with the town. Unfortunately, it does fall to the town clerk to collect those fees and to hold that information for the registration. So when I spoke to her, she said it was gonna be an impossible task for her to do. Um, now maybe her opinion has changed some now that she has an assistant, but it would definitely be something that I'd be willing to, uh, discuss with her again. Um, because I think it is important to follow suit like we are with the other fields in having those fees to do a constructive, um, comprehensive maintenance plan that doesn't rely solely on, um, volunteers. Um, but that, with that being said, the dog park itself, when I designed it with the help of the Stanton Foundation, I tried to make it as maintenance-free as possible. No grass, the stones, having the sprinkler system installed so it can be washed down to maintain it and keep it, uh, sanitary. Um, so, yeah, it's still gonna be, require some maintenance here and there to clean up and, and do other things and it would be nice to have that money. So I agree that, uh, an annual, uh, fee would be nice, but the, the, the two things that would be, be the hardest thing to do is to have it collected and then enforced, 'cause the enforcement typically falls upon the animal, uh, control officer. I know even the animal control officer in Beverly, uh, was not big on enforcing it for Beverly just because he was happy that they were there and not in the fields where they shouldn't be.
Case question.
It's a little thing.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, question, go ahead, Dan.
You're, you're in the know more than I am, um, Jason, um, so i- in terms of, um, risk and exposure, I mean, it, let's just say hypothetically, there was a dog in there that wasn't vaccinated, I mean, uh, rabies is a serious thing. It's, it's remote, but when it happens, it's, uh, extremely serious. So we have a, uh, dog license requirement and you have to get, you know, make, have proof of, uh, rabies, uh, um, shots in order to get a license, so, um, I think that's first and foremost. Secondary issues, uh, you know, state sanitary code is, uh, gonna be, you know, a clean environment and, you know, the, the money is, it, it wouldn't be a lot, I don't think, I don't think it would cost more than a couple hours of somebody time, time over there, you know, waking up and cleaning up and bagging up or, you know, doing what they gotta do, I don't think it'd be exorbitant. But I, I think that having dogs come in, that we don't know whether or not they have, um, a dog license with the rabies shot, I think is, uh, a serious, uh, issue. So how do we address that? I mean, if there's more burden on the, uh, town clerk, then maybe we talk to the town clerk and see what he needs for, uh, help and that might influence our decision on fee or no fee.
I'll definitely talk to her.
Go ahead, go ahead.
See what she says.
Um, anybody else? It, it'd be nice if we could do something there, but who's gonna police it? And that's-
That's a hard part.
Who's gonna, who's gonna go into the dog park and check and see if the, uh, uh, if the dogs are licensed, if they're, if they're vaccinated? Well, they gotta be vaccinated to be licensed, I guess. Uh, but who, who's gonna do it?
I have a suggestion, I mean, if you, you, you know, you gave out a permit sticker or something for their car, not necessarily everyone's parking there, I suppose they could walk there, but, um, you could issue some sort of, uh, um, ID, you know, like I belong to a, a club and I have an ID, you know, put it on one of these things.
Yeah, that's exactly what Beverly did.
So could you get a photo, could you get a photo ID and it's like, you know, I don't know if the police would want the responsibility, but, um, you know, we can't turn a blind eye to it, if there's a problem, there's a problem, I don't, I'm just trying to avoid problems, that's all I'm trying to do, um, if, if, if somebody's dog was bitten and it had rabies and there's a quarantine process for that and it's serious, so, uh-
Yeah, it's forty-five days.
Yeah, so why don't we see what we can do to avoid it, but I think, uh, maybe a quick photo or something and here's your, here's your permit, give, you know, pay twenty-five bucks, don't pass go type of thing. And then, you know, visually somebody could drive by the animal control and say, oh, the guy doesn't have this around his neck with his dog, you know, where's your ID? I, I don't know that it's gonna be pull your wallet out and show me your papers, maybe you should have your papers on you.
One suggestion is if you could do like an ID card and have a board right on the front so the cop or whoever could just drive by, see there's five tags on the board, five dogs in there, make it eat, you know, then when you have to get out of the car, quick, easy, drive by.
Well, who picks up the trash, Jason?
What's that?
Who picks up the trash? Because the people that pick up after their dog-
Yeah, the volunteers put it all into the, uh, trash at the pines and then the pines is picked up, I believe, on Fridays.
Anything else, Dan?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
We'll wait for Jason to talk to the town clerk and, um, sure it's a question of how and how much, that's usually the issue.
Sounds good. Uh, town administrator time, Rebecca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I only have a couple of items, like I mentioned, free cash was certified, uh, the auditors are here this week. And then also to thank the fire department for hosting Santa this past Sunday, it was a very nice event. I brought my kids and, um, they very much enjoyed the candy and hot chocolate. Um, and then also to thank, uh, Annie Schindler, the Groveland Municipal Light Department, the Highway Department, uh, as well as Noonan's for all of their help with the holiday decor and lights that you will see around downtown. Uh, specifically this year we added some lights along that elm tree and, elm trees in the square.
Okay, um, Selectmen Timon reports, uh, Kathy, you have anything?
Um, no.
Jason?
No, not today.
Mark?
Good.
Dan?
Not today.
I don't either, hundred percent. Hold the unfinished business, Board of Selectmen's policies and procedures, Selectman Castrenales.
Um, if it pleases Chairman, um, I don't have any new drafts this meeting, I was planning to perhaps bring forth something at the January meeting. I did send Selectman McDonald an email that if he wanted to work on adjusting the policies that are already in place. I know you suggested that he put some time into it as well. Um, I'm more than happy to put together the, um, draft of the, um, code of conduct for town boards and for the Board of Selectmen, but at this time I wanted to also bring up under unfinished business that I did draft a letter to the school committee. It is, it is in my pen, this is just a draft of it, so I'd ask that, you already have your draft, right? This may change, so don't, don't distribute this, please, if you, if you don't mind. I know it's a public meeting so anybody can see it, but, um, I do plan to review this some more and make sure that I've asked the question. So I think most of you are aware that I, that I've continued to attend the school committee meetings last year during the budget process and then again this year when they invited us to attend, um, for an open discussion. And in the spirit of that open discussion, um, my goal here is to bring forward the questions and concerns now before the budget is voted and get the information, um, from the school committee that so many people were asking about last year, myself included, um, so that we can have a, a better understanding of, um, the financial burden that Groveland is facing, um, how we're expected to fund this. Um, there certainly has been a change in the state, um, adopted formula that led to some of our additional burden and that's not, that's not Groveland's fault, that was a state formula change that shifted percentage-wise more of the burden towards Groveland. Um, there is another allocation method men- mentioned in the Massachusetts general law or state law that allows a Pennsyl State district budget to be somehow, um, distributed in a different manner. I don't know this manner, so I'm asking the Pennsyl State Regional School District if they know how to allocate it in that manner using net school spending. This is outside my area of expertise and my ability to, um, research. Um, another critical factor, um, that was driving the budget was the, um, creation of a stabilization fund um, within the Pennsyl State, uh, school budget and we must've voted an article that allowed this. All three towns had to have approved this stabilization fund. Um, but at this time I think we need more information about the, the monies that are in the stabilization fund, what they're used for, um, I cannot find any public reporting of these monies on the state website and I've asked the Department of Secondary Edu- Elementary and Secondary Education, they don't have those reports, so I'm awaiting more information, but I also ask the Pennsyl State School District if they would be willing to share that information with us. Then I also, um, asked some questions, I know it's been an ongoing concern, um, the cost of special education continues to increase faster than Proposition Two and a Half, faster than the school or the town can keep up. However, there is something called circuit breaker funds, which are provided to the Regional School District, although they lag in, they have a one-year lag, so they file for these funds and then these funds are supposed to be applied against the cost of special education. And so I've asked the Pennsyl State School District to provide us some more information on those, um, circuit breaker funds and the application within the budget so that we can better understand that. I've also asked some questions about the enrollment numbers that are used in the allocation of the budget because they don't tie to the enrollment numbers that are used at the state level to determine the allocation of Chapter Seventy money and I would just like to better understand why that is appropriate, if that is appropriate. Um, and again, we're looking at our regional agreement as well, we're working in collaboration with the towns of Merrimack and West Newbury and we're also working, at least myself personally, planning to work in collaboration with the Pennsyl State School District Administration and School Committee. This is to, um, initiate discussion and open exchange of information so that we better understand the school budget and our obligation. My goal through this discussion is to hopefully bring about some positive, um, exchanges of information so that we can all work together towards a better process than what we had last year.
Okay, comments? Anybody?
Mr. Chair, yeah, um, I said I'd work with Kathy on the, uh, operating policies and procedures and I read through it and I made some, uh, changes and I can give that to you after, Kathy, if you like, just made some.
Oh, you made the changes to the existing policies?
I made some suggested changes, you know, edits, I'd, my check is scratched, if you could read it, great.
Those aren't the existing policies, those are my draft policies that I was gonna change.
Well, I thought that's what I was supposed to work with you on.
No, I sent an email, I said-
Not these?
No.
Different ones?
Yep, the ones you were reading from, the ones where, um, fifty percent attendance of a board member, that's not it, no.
You don't, you discarded these?
You can discard those, yeah.
All right, never mind.
No, don't discard those, those are the drafts that we worked on.
No, I'm gonna, well, yes, I'm gonna revise from the template that I got from the state and bring something else forward. You can throw those out.
What's that, did I get something?
Well, I had so, I don't know if, is, is this the time, Mr. Chairman, to talk about some of the, I mean, some of the things were just, you know, edits, but, uh, you know, uh, uh, not really substantive, but there were some issues that I think are substantive, unless you withdrew them, Kathy, um-
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, hold on.
No, you hold on, please.
Hold on, he's got the floor.
Excuse me, I just need to make a point of clarification, it's important.
Dan has the floor, Dan, when you're finished?
I'll ask you, Kathy, are these moot, you revised them completely?
These are moot, yes, please, those are moot right now, yes, 'cause I brought forward the template from the state and the suggestion was made that we look at something simpler, so that was the next step. Editing these is just, is just, yeah, exercise in futility, yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so have I been disbanded from working with Kathy on this? 'Cause it seems like she unilaterally changed that, uh, what the direction we were going with. So we're not gonna use what you presented at the last meeting, which I put time and effort into making some suggestions, so.
You're gonna continue to work with them?
So-
I did send Dan McDonald an email, I never heard back from him and I suggested that he was reading from the existing policy on membership on committees and fifty percent attendance since he seemed interested in that.
It's not existing, this is a draft you presented.
Excuse me, excuse me, I sent you an email and I did not hear back from you about whether or not you were gonna work on that policy, so then I just assumed we would wait. So if you wanna just respond to my email, that would be great. Thank you.
Uh, would you, would I wait till next meeting?
Yeah, wonderful.
Uh, Jason?
Yes, I think, uh, we should probably table the, um, policies and procedures until after budget season and until we finalize the, uh, regional agreement and deal with the other things that are a little bit more important. Um, I do understand and, and also believe that the policies are important, but in this particular timeframe, I think the, uh, budget and the school is much more important. I'd rather to put our focus on that and then turn back to that after the season.
Okay. Good.
Is that a motion?
Do you wanna make that on the, uh, to table?
That's a motion.
In a, in a motion.
Able to after budget season.
Yes.
I like it. Second.
Able to after budget season, both.
Second.
Motion and a second to table. All in favor of tabling? In unanimous, looks like. Thank you. Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting? We didn't have anything that I know of?
I do have one other thing.
You have one?
Yes. I have one other thing that I should've mentioned during Selectmen's time. Um, I've been doing a lot of research on the senior citizens', um, circuit breaker tax break, and I think all the seniors in the town really need to start writing some letters to their state representatives, because, um, there's two proposed bills that have been in the House and the Senate for two and a half years. One is four-nine-nine-seven, which proposes that it goes, that they change from seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar tax break to, um, eleven-forty-five or seventeen-fifty, and the other one is, uh, thirty-fifty-seven. And that's proposed change to go from the circuit breaker tax instead of having a dollar amount to do half of the property tax paid. Uh, myself, I think that's probably a better way to go, and I think they need to stop stalling, cause they've done a tremendous amount of research of the effects of the towns, and it's just, it's just far too long, especially right now since everything has gone so crazy. And the only other thing I'd like to add to those bills is the one thing that they didn't address was the qualification incomes, and those qualification incomes haven't been changed in a very long time, and they need to be increased. So I know, as I'm doing the research, I'm trying to put together a letter that I can start circulating out to other boards, city council, all the state representatives. I got a lot of the information. Some of them don't even use emails, which I found very shocking, but, uh, that's, that's the avenue that I'm taking, and I can certainly use a lot of everybody's help out there. So, and that would allow us to be more effective in supporting our schools without having to add the burden to the senior citizens. And I think that's gonna be important, especially in the, the years to come.
Thank you. Good information. Correspondence. November seventh, twenty-twenty-two Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes. Correspondence, November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes. And the next roll call into an executive session. Now, Jason, you wanna read the, uh, executive session?
In accordance to Mass. General Law C-30A, Section Twenty-one A, One, to hear complaints and/or charges against a public employee or official.
Okay. Roll call into executive session.
Just spend a second.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Motion.
Discussion.
Hold on.
I want discussion in the open session, please, Mr. Chairman.
The, uh...
I have concerns about this art, this item posted on our agenda, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to voice that.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have not, in my packet, received a document which charges a public employee or a public official with anything. I have in my packet an email from the principal of Bagnell School citing concerns about discussion that occurred at a recreation committee meeting, and also citing concerns about the administration of the Bagnell summer camp program that is run through the town. I did not see a complaint lodged against a public official, and I question that. I've asked the town administrator to send my question to our town attorney, because it's a serious matter to make an allegation against somebody without factual evidence, and to go into private session on it is even more serious. So I take that responsibility very seriously, and I have asked the town administrator to forward my concern to the town council, and I would ask for this board to please table this executive session until I can see the information from the town attorney and have time to read through it and understand the situation more completely, because, again, I say that it's a very serious affair to say that there's an allegation against a public employee or a public official, and that needs to be documented clearly in written form, my understanding of it. I have not seen such a document, and therefore I have some questions and concerns, and I would ask that we postpone or table this executive session until my questions and concerns are responded to by the town attorney.
Uh, Dan?
Well, as far as, um, like you mentioned something about lack of evidence, um, we, were informed, um, of a, um, a, uh, whether or not it was a formal grievance, uh, it, in my opinion, passed the threshold for us to look at it. It was a, uh, recreation committee, uh, meeting that was in the public forum. Um, it's, um, if you watched the, um, meeting, I watched it on YouTube, I, I think that it's, um, clear on its face. After watching it myself, I don't think that, um, I need any further information. I think it's, uh, clear on its face, and I think this board, uh, has authority to act on it. I think it's past the, uh, threshold, and I don't need, I think we require a, uh, a formal complaint or grievance from any of the pub, any member of the public, um, having seen it myself. So on, uh, if, so we have somebody that spoke up, but, um, it, um, I don't know if it's moot or not, but, um, I would like to proceed with this, because I have knowledge of it and I simply can't ignore it. So, uh, you know, um, and that's the reason for the, for the discussion. If there's a problem with an employee or an appointee, then the proper forum is an executive session to discuss it. I'm not gonna prejudge what direction that's gonna go in, but the only way we can talk about it is within an executive session. It protects the town's interest and it protects the, uh, uh, the, the person involved, uh, with privacy, unless they choose to waive. If that particular person wants time, um, to, um, um, get advice or consultation, um, then we can continue, but I think it's past the threshold and, um, you know, time may be of the essence. I don't know if there's other meetings coming up, um, but I think we ought to have a dialogue it, dialogue on it in executive session to decide as a board how we want to proceed or not proceed. So I think it should move into ex- executive session, and it should not be, should not be tabled.
Mr. Chairman, yes. Well, the privilege of executive session is only extended if the person who the complaint against, um, allows for it to be held in executive session. Secondly, um, you're not a municipal attorney. I know you have your feelings. I have not watched any video of any meeting. I have just looked at the agenda, was confused, read the memo over several times, um, from the Bagnell School principal. I saw that there is some conflict regarding the summer program. We saw this last winter as well with the usage of space and allocation of resources within Bagnell and the use of that space by the Bagnell program, and there has been conflict before on this. I thought we had resolved it. It appears that it's not altogether resolved yet, but I do not see that we have authority to go into secret session to discuss a public employee or a board member at this time. I don't see that there is an official complaint against somebody that would rise to the level of an executive session, and I, I question the motive of the board. It seems that I asked if there was additional information on this issue, Mr. Chairman. I sent you an email and said, is there more information I should see, more things I should look at? I didn't hear back, so I finally called the town administrator, and it's hard for me, I'm a teacher, to call during the day, so I called after work and caught her and said, what, what am I supposed to see other than this e- email? And she said, have you looked at the meeting? I said, no. So I have not had time to look at the meeting. I wasn't on the inside loop on this, I guess, but this is very serious when you're going into an executive secret session to discuss somebody and say there's an allegation against them when there's, doesn't appear to be anything in writing that rises to the level of that type of session. I'm just, I'm just concerned, Mr. Chairman, that we should not take actions like this without due cause and due care, and we should consult with our municipal attorney, who is well-schooled in this and can tell us for sure. If our attorney says, yes, you should address this, I will listen to that, okay? That's what I'm looking for, professional advice so that we don't make a misstep here. I'm not trying to avoid dealing with the issue. I really am not. I just feel that this is very serious, and you need to consider seriously that we should take legal advice before we make these kind of steps.
Okay, we, uh, uh, read, we read the paperwork, the, uh, executive session, and, uh, we'll take a roll call vote to go into executive session. Uh, Kathy?
No.
Uh, Jason?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We'll, uh, we'll stand in recess.
I will not participate.
We'll stand in recess, uh...
Is it my choice whether it's aired or in private?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You can all stay.
Thank you. Uh, we're back, we're back after a short recess. Bill has exercised his right. You still want it in open session?
Oh, heck, yeah, I don't trust anybody, uh, no offense meant, but I don't trust anybody with a narrative in a closed-door session. The, uh, ethical character, I would have to call into question, so, yeah, I want everybody to see this. I mean, it should be aired. If you wanna air the town's dirty laundry, I'm just the guy to hang it on the clothesline for you, so let's have at it.
Okay. You've read the comments, uh, and we're, uh, executive session's been waived. This is based upon comments made at a, uh, uh, recreation committee meeting on November sixteenth, I believe. And, uh, for those, uh, on the board, Kathy, you haven't seen the video. Rebecca, can you get that up on the screen? Try. Oh. Are you a computer person?
With Max's help, I might be.
No, I watched it at, what did it start at, about forty minutes into the meeting?
Not for anything, but I would thought, somebody would've had this all queued up already, you know, save some time.
We can do, um, we can hit the audio, we can't, and you can see it on my computer, but we can't get it. For some reason, it's not allowing our mic screen to share on...
She has a privacy thing on the computer itself that...
You, you can get audio?
I can get audio.
Mr. Chairman, you don't need to do this for my benefit. If you and Selectman McDonald have some charges or allegations, I think you should just speak openly about what your concern is.
I, I think you should, uh, I, I think you should see it.
Well, that's why I asked for you to table. It's that I could do it at my leisure and not have to sit here waiting to hear audio only if something, I just, I don't care for you to show it to me at this time. You can proceed. You've already made your agenda. You've spoken to Selectman McDonald about it. You obviously are in alignment on this. Right? So what is the allegation? What is it?
What do you want me to, what, what part, where?
I don't, I don't need, don't do anything.
I think it started about forty-five minutes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I don't need any props in here. I just need to hear from the board members what the allegation is. It's not in the letter that I read, so what is the allegation?
The allegations...
adult-to-child ratio with younger kids and then with older kids.
Yeah. Okay, great.
When does registration actually close? Is it open, like, at the school that's going to impact the areas that the camp uses?
Any other questions?
Oh, yes. What you just said is both very disappointing to me, and it makes me very angry, because I was there at the beginning when we discussed how many rooms you would have and which rooms there would be. So the first question is, when they came to you and said you can't use this room, it was the day of, and was it for just that day, or was it for an extended period of time? It was both, a combination of both. Okay. On Friday is typically your big field trip day, right? Field trips generally Thursdays. Thursdays, okay. It's been a few years since all my kids were in the program. So Thursdays, the building is typically, you know, very sparsely populated, would you say? Correct. So Thursdays would be kind of a good day to do that stuff, right? Maybe. See, to me, and I'm going to say it because I don't really care, it sounds that this stuff was done intentionally to you, because I was there on the day, and we talked about they were going to do a deep cleaning of the entire school, and they told us how many days it would take to clean each room. And mathematically, I figured out that they could do it without interrupting you one stinking day. And they didn't have just two weeks like they thought they had at the end of the school year, because the school year started late this week. So no matter how many times they tried to tell me they only had two weeks at the end of your program, they had three, not two. So what they're doing sounds to me intentional, and it sounds intentional because there were comments made during that meeting that now, when I think about it, really comes down to really pettiness. Was any child in Groveland refused entrance to your program last year? No. Was any child in Groveland ever refused, because of space, refused your program? No. So when somebody makes a comment that, well, other children come from other towns and enjoy this program, it's really none of their stinking business, is it? We always put Groveland children in front of out-of-town children. Correct. And so my point is, no child from Groveland has ever been displaced due to another child from another town, have they? Correct. So in that respect, it's none of that person's stinking business where these children come from, as long as no child from Groveland is ever displaced by another child from another town, correct? Correct. It's always been important to me. And according to the math that we did, and we were all doing the math, it's not hard math. I mean, we're not talking trigonometry or calculus here when we did this math. It was very plain and simple. They had plenty of time to deep clean every stinking room in that building without interrupting your program one stinking hour. Is that not true? I believe I had a couple of witnesses here. You were with me, and Rebecca was with me. And my math isn't that bad, that I could screw up that bad that they would mess up your program for one stinking hour, never mind a day. It is repulsive to me that the school continues to act in this territorial way, that they disrespect our ownership of that building to such a degree that it just, it's incomprehensible. I took a tour of that building downstairs where we had, where you stored your equipment. Most of the stuff they stored there was garbage, absolute garbage. It should have been thrown in dumpsters years ago, but they wanted to use that an excuse that you couldn't have room to put your stuff. So now we had to spend almost $13,000 to buy a container to put your equipment in because they don't want to share. The first stinking thing you're learning in kindergarten, how to share, isn't it? You're an educator, right? The first thing I learned, how to share. I had two siblings. I learned it before kindergarten. Why can't this school district learn to share? It's disgusting. It really is disgusting. For the money that your program contributes to that school, you paid for those air conditioners that they're not allowed to use, didn't you? When they broke, where did the money come from? It came from the proceeds for your program, didn't it? Yes. A lot of the grounds behind the school that were refurbished to where they're actually usable now came from the proceeds from your program, isn't that true? Yes. So to be treated so unkindly and so unfairly needs to stop. And if we can't push back, I'm telling you, this needs to end. It needs to end. The pettiness needs to end, okay? These are kids. These are our kids. These are kids that come from our community. These are our children that are being impacted by your pettiness, and it needs to end. Plain and simple. I'm tired of it. I've been living with it for a number of years. My oldest child is 30 years old. That tells you how many years I've been involved in this program. All 18, I've had at least one child in your program for most of the time. I know how instrumental, how vital it is to the people, the parents in this community, to have that program so they can work and afford and support their families. And without that, God knows what they would do, how difficult it would be for them. And we also, just so everybody knows, because, you know, we're meeting here for the first time, we offer scholarships. Yes, you do. For families who are, you know, financially can't afford the charge, and those scholarships, because I've been a little bit upset because there have been rumors out there that how we handle those scholarships and...
Want me to play more?
Those scholarships, just so everybody is clear, is only offered to Groveland children. The way it should be. And no child should be refused participation in anything because their parents cannot afford it. Somewhere along the line, we can find the money for that kid. And if you can't find the money in your pocket, you call me. I'll write you the check, because no child should be refused for anything like that because their parents simply can't afford it. It's wrong. That's all the comments I have to make, because I'm just so disgusted by what went on.
Thank you.
Treatment they've been had.
How about the agreement? Forward it to the agreement. Yeah, when he mentioned about you were there, you was there, I don't know who else was.
Ed, you participated in some of the meetings on this issue.
What's that?
You were there for some of these meetings. There's been an ongoing conflict with the use of the Bagnall School.
We're not talking about some of these meetings. We're talking about this particular one.
Mr. Chair?
Dan, go ahead.
Are you going to continue with it? Because I watched it, and the most egregious part of it is the spit-on comments. So, can you play that?
Can you play that?
Which one?
Spitting on the agreement.
Am I wrong, Bill?
The most egregious part? When, I guess, I guess I see things different. You see, when...
You must.
Yeah, I must, because when I give you my word, you can take it to the stinking bank. They'll cash it, because I'll follow through with my word. I honor what I say. I make an agreement, I honor it to my death, okay? You may be different. You may make agreements and then not honor them. I get that. We differ in character, I guess. Maybe that's the problem. But I had an agreement when I left that room that day. I had an agreement from several people. I had an understanding. And when it seems like it wasn't honored, yeah, you know what it sounds like to me? They took our agreement, they spit on it, because they didn't honor it. So I think I chose the appropriate words. I don't think I changed a stinking word I said, I stand by everything I said, because unlike all of you, I've been dealing with this issue since 2015. So you can take the letter, and that's all you know, then you all, speaking from a tremendous position of ignorance. See, this isn't my first rodeo with these folks. This isn't the first time I've gone down to that school and examined the grounds and examined the rooms and had a meeting of the minds. This time, I took the extraordinary steps of meeting with them before the school year ended and before the summer's camp started, so that we could get an agreement on exactly which rooms would be used, which rooms couldn't be used, what part of the building could be used, what parts of the building could not be used. And we had an agreement. We had an agreement. So, yeah, what do you call, what do you call an agreement when it's broken? How do you define that? What do you call it?
Can I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Bill, you have a right, okay? If you feel like you've been slighted, or if you think they broke a promise and you were lied to, you can express that. The reason I believe we're here today, or why I'm here today on this issue, is that you feel that you're justified to use spit-on language, and I don't think you are, okay? It's a limited public forum. We have to maintain levels of decorum, and I think you crossed the line on that. So you said you wouldn't change a thing, and you're justified. So if that's how we're going to proceed from now on, I believe that's a slippery slope. And I'm not going to tell you what to do, you know? If you're not, you know, if you think there's nothing wrong with what you do, then that's why we're here talking about it. But I think the, you know, I know Jim Day, I know the program. You might feel like you were treated unfairly. You have an absolute right to express that you feel like, you know, what you did or what, you know, someone else did was wrong. You have that right. But the level of rhetoric, I think you crossed over the line. That's my opinion, to say, every time I disagree with somebody, let's just say, I disagree with you, you questioned my character. Oh, so you're spitting on my character, Bill. I mean, to what level of civility are we going to drop if that's the level of rhetoric? And you've known me over the years.
The two examples are, but as analogous as an apple to a trolley car. If we have a disagreement on a subject matter, that's completely different than if we came to an agreement on something. And that you intentionally or unintentionally decided that you weren't going to abide by the agreement, okay? That's not a difference of opinion.
So let me ask you this.
And you know what? I'm going to be the first to tell you. I have flawed like every other human being on this earth, and if I wasn't flawed, they would have already crucified me on a cross. I'm not looking to be that perfect. I know I'm never going to be that perfect, okay? But the fact, the matter remains, when I left that room with Rebecca and others, we had an agreement. When you break the agreement, what is that? That's not a difference of opinion, sir. That's a, that's a, that's a breaking of vows. It's not simply you're Republican and I'm Democrat. No, no, sir. I disagree with that wholeheartedly. When you have an agreement, and you're a lawyer, you have an agreement. You have an agreement with a client. You have an agreement with a case. Do you go back and say, meh, I don't really like the agreement anymore, so, you know what, I'm not going to choose to honor it? It's not a matter of I disagree with the agreement, it's a matter of I made an agreement, now I just don't want to abide by it. It's completely different. The analogy isn't even the same. I don't know how you can make that argument.
Mr. Chair, could I respond?
No, Mr. Chairman, I haven't spoken yet.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Look, go.
I think it's somewhat disingenuous for this board to speak of code of conduct or sinking below a line. Anybody who's sat where I've sat knows that we've gone below the line several times with no apologies or anything. So if we want to start to set a code of conduct as a board of selectmen, the first step is for us to set a code of conduct for the board of selectmen, and then to distribute it to the other town committees and boards. People get passionate, and I know that sometimes impassioned speech can insult people and can create divides where we don't want divides. But for us to sit here and say that there's a line below which you can't drop is just ludicrous, because it happens at our meetings on and off all the time, and anybody that watches them knows that. So why don't we just start to take ownership of a code of conduct on the board of selectmen and stop going after other people and kind of clean up our act first?
Dan, go ahead. Add some more comments.
Yeah, you know, things are political, okay? And they are, okay? So Kat Kay over there will talk a good game when she brings this pile of procedures in here, but there's rules for some people and there's rules for the rest of us. So I voted against you for appointment. I don't know if you're aware of that.
Oh, of course I am. It's a political hack job, as somebody would say.
Yeah, it's a political hack job. Why? I'll tell you why, if you want to know.
When you begin to refuse volunteers that actually want to help the town, you guys are in trouble.
It's, let me finish, Mr. Chair.
We are the people that make the town.
Bill, could you, Dan has the floor. Could you let him finish?
Bill, I appreciate, I appreciate your passion and your care. I've seen you down the Little League field. I've seen you here, there. You put a lot of time in. But the end doesn't justify the means. And if we're going to give lip service to having some rules of civility in this town, then fine. But if we're not, then it's a free-for-all. So you think there's nothing wrong with the spit-on comments? I happen to. My vote was a no on appointing you, and it's still the same. So if the rest of the board wants to do nothing about it because it's Kathy's friend, and that's how Kathy works, and...
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Mr. Chairman, point of order. Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
No, you...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
No, 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 no. Let me finish.
No, Mr. Chairman, I rise to a point of order.
What's your point of order?
Either you control this meeting and you tell Selectman McDonald to stop taking personal attacks on me, making up in his mind his own little stories, which he does, or that's it, I'm going to file a complaint. You need to take responsibility for conducting this meeting.
May I respond?
No.
I need to respond to something, but I wasn't personally harmed by any of this, so I'm not sure where you get that, but I'm going to be honest with you. Mister, if you want to get my attention and get it fast, then all you have to do is mess with the seeds of my future, the children, or the fruits of my past, yenderly, and you are going to get my attention butt-fast, okay? Because now you're picking on the most exploitable and vulnerable segments of our society. So you know what? I didn't, it's not personally, I wasn't hurt personally by any of this that goes on down there, but I can see how it affects children. And then, not even my children. I'm not sure whose children they are, but as far as I look at it, I look at it like when I joined the Little League. They're all my children, and I have to treat every single one of them as if they were my children. And that's how it works, because if I start treating my children differently than everybody else's children, it all falls apart in a heartbeat, because everyone can see, there's a bias here. There's an unfairness here. I don't get that. I grew up in a big Irish Catholic family, okay, where you made room, and there was no your kids, my kids. Move over, there's going to be another kid at the table.
So if the rest of the board wants to do nothing about it, because it's Kathy's friend, and that's how Kathy works, and...
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Mr. Chairman, point of order. Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
No, you, you...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
No, 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 let me finish, let me finish.
No, Mr. Chairman, I rise to a point of order.
What's your point of order?
Either you control this meeting, and you tell Selectman McDonough to stop taking personal attacks on me, making up in his mind his own little stories, which he does, or that's it. I'm going to file a complaint. You need to take responsibility for conducting this meeting.
May I respond?
No.
Well, I, I need to respond to something, but I wasn't personally harmed by any of this, so I'm not sure where you get that. But I'm gonna be honest with you. If, mister, if you wanna get my attention, and get it fast, then all you have to do is mess with the seeds of my future, the children, or the fruits of my past, the elderly. And you're gonna get my attention, but fast, okay? Because now you're picking on the most exploitable and vulnerable segments of our society. So you know what? I didn't, it's not personally, I wasn't hurt personally by any of this that goes on down there. But I can see how it affects children. And then, not even my children. I'm not sure whose children they are. But as far as I look at it, I look at it like when I, when I joined the Little League. They're all my children. And I have to treat every single one of them as if they were my children. And that's how it works. Because if I start treating my children differently than everybody else's children, it all falls apart in a heartbeat. Because everyone can see, there's a bias here. There's an unfairness here. I don't get that. I grew up in a big Irish Catholic family, okay, where you made room, and there was no, your kids, my kids. Move over. There's gonna be another kid at the table, whatever. And you moved over, and you made room, and your mother made another meal. Okay? So none of this affects me personally, other than the fact that it seems to be affecting the children of this community and other communities. And that's what gets me. Okay, that's, you wanna get my attention quick? Do something to those two segments. You'll get my attention.
Just, uh, let me, let me go and get back to you, Dan. I, I think you have to agree that sometimes there's agreements that are made, and because of unforeseen circumstances, uh, they were broken. And I, I, I think you have to agree that not, not every agreement is solid. There are, there are times that it, that get broken for certain reasons. And, uh, if, if, one, in reading from the paperwork, one, one room was promised, that was promised was accidentally cleaned and waxed by a new custodian while he was on vacation. And went to Matty, apologized, and let them back in the room after the floor had dried. That seems to me like it might be an unforeseen circumstance. I mean, it, it certainly doesn't sound to me like it was, uh, the, the agreement that was made, it was broken. And then it adds funny. It was never discussed that one of our classrooms was trashed during an evening when counselors were playing a team-building activity. Tables and chairs throughout the room were flipped over and scattered around the room. The director failed to mention that. The storage trailer. I volunteered to, uh, to store equipment in a small gym. Then my crew moved ninety percent of the equipment into the trailer to help them when they had no staff. I, I then gave up a weekend with my family time to open the building so they could move inflatables. Again, never mentioned during the meeting. The garbage that Mr. O'Neill mentions from our basement is actually custodial supplies, PTA supplies and furniture, not garbage. The storage trailer was not just about space. Asking my staff to report on weekends to unlock basement and unlock the basement, and get equipment and put equipment away is not acceptable. The trailer gives access anytime without the need from anyone, uh, from the district to open it. Cleaning, yes. We were given two to three weeks to clean after the summer camp ends. What was not discussed is the fact that that gives no time for teachers to get the classrooms ready for students. Preparing to educate children should always be a priority over the summer program. So there are unforeseen circumstances. You've got to agree that, uh, it seems like it was just a mistake.
I can, I can accept unforeseen circumstances. This was not unforeseen, okay? This was a dialogue that was had, agreed upon. There were classes that were marked out. We actually had a grid. This is not unforeseen. This is not accidental, in my opinion, okay? Because this was laid out well in advance. Now, as far as the garbage, there was garbage. And oddly enough, I had that corroborated by someone that actually works in the building a couple of days after they saw the meeting, and said, "Mr. O'Neill, you're absolutely right. We throw a lot of stuff over this summer. It was garbage. It was rotted. We threw it away." So, I don't know. I, I, I tend to believe the person that told me that they actually threw the stuff away than the person that he said, she said. And getting back to the room that was trashed, one of my ideas, if I had been re-elected, was we were gonna have a walkthrough at the end of the summer school, at the end of the school year, and before the summer school session started. So that we, and we would take pictures of the classrooms. This is what it was. So it's not gonna be a he-said, she-said argument at the end of the day. Did any of you bother, bother to pick up that baton from me and carry it through to the goal line? Thought not. At, at the end of the summer program, the idea was to have another walkthrough with the pictures that we had taken before. Are the rooms in the exact same order that they were when you left it? Yes or no? It's a very simple question. No time for debate. Anybody pick up that baton? Thought not. So you see, you can say a lot. You can throw it everything out there, but it's just wah-wah-wah-wah. It's a, it, it's a bitch letter. I've been doing this for too long. I've seen this too many times. When things reoccur, we call it a trend. After they become a trend for a while, it becomes a pattern, right? Is that, or is it the other way around? I'm not sure. But, you, you know, you don't see this kind of thing six, seven years in a row, and believe it's just mere coincidence after a while, that it's just, well, unforeseen circumstances. You know, this didn't start yesterday. It didn't start the day before. It didn't start last year. It didn't start before, the year before that. It's been going on for a while. So I feel absolutely justified in everything I said. I don't recall, and you can play it again for the audience, but I don't recall mentioning one person's name. Did you hear me mention anybody's name? I don't. So maybe the person that wrote the letter has a guilty conscience. Because nobody got mentioned, so I'm not sure...
Dan, do you have another comment? Hold on, let, back to Dan.
Why the offense, who, who took offense to that? Because we didn't, we, nobody was called out, except the school. And the school, I don't think can write letters. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe the school got smart.
Dan, go ahead.
Bill, you missed the point. You have a right to object to, uh, um, what you perceive as a wrong. It's just how you do it, you know? Or did you accomplish anything with, with the spit-on comments, and the stinking this, and the stinking that? I mean, did that accomplish anything? And let me just, one more comment, and, but, the... This board appointed you, right? They did, okay? We're accountable to the electorate, and this board voted for you, all right? And I voted no, 'cause I think that the way you approached this situation, approached it, is ineffective. It's not productive, and it's toxic within that committee. So I don't know. If other people are intimidated, I don't speak for them, but you, you, you're way too headstrong on it. So that's my, my perspective, yeah.
So you're an absolute genius and a, and a foreteller, because you voted against me before this meeting happened?
Yeah, 'cause I've seen, 'cause...
Can I get five numbers and a Powerball? Me and you will be rich tonight.
Uh, Bill, hold on, Jason.
Seen the movie, Bill.
Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, uh, when you say that you just insulted the school, Mr. Day represents the school, and so he took that very personal. When you said that you intentional, that they intentionally disrupted the class to, um, basically disrupt the summer camp, he took that very personal, and that's why he wrote the letter, because he represents the school.
I gotta calm down.
I don't think that if I was gonna do something intentional, it would be one day, out of all the days that they met. So I don't think that was justified in being said. I don't think any of it was done in a professional or constructive manner. I can understand why the school got upset. You, at that time, only had one side of the discussion. So to make a decision, or even to make a lengthy comment, I don't think was appropriate. Yeah, I, I don't think the way that you did it was professional or becoming of any board member. Um, regardless of how this board has acted at any particular time, it's statements and actions like that as reasons why we put in specific policies on specific situations, um, like the social media policy. When things are set out of anger and passion, and, uh, in your position representing the town, it's not appropriate. I just, I just, I just think it could have been handled in a much, much better way.
That's your opinion. How many, how many, can you tell us how many years you've been involved with this situation, with the conflict between the, the school and the, and the summer program?
Absolutely none.
That's what I, okay, thank you.
No worries.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Kathy, I think Mike had something before you, and then back to you.
Go ahead, thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I think, uh, I mean, I voted for you for the rec-mitting. I don't know if you watched the meeting.
Appreciate that, yeah, I knew that.
I'm your number-one supporter, so, uh, it's just more your delivery. I get you're passionate about it, but I work on our construction side. If I talk that way to anybody, I'd get my ass kicked, all right? It's just, I think that's more of what's concerned to me, is just your attitude, and it's just... I, if I could, I, I would change my vote, unfortunately.
That's why.
You can, you can talk straight to, you know, straightforward to each other at a nice, quiet tone that's respectable. It's just, things you said, I don't know, I, I disagree. I would have handled it a little bit better, I think, if, if, if it was a big, but, just my, just my opinion.
And I certainly agree with you, and I did that in 2016, in 2017, in 2018, in 2019, in 2020, in 2021. But when does it end? When does it end?
Like I said, I'm just...
Now, I tried to be nice, and I, and, and I was very cordial at the meeting. What do you need? How many rooms can you clean in a room? There was no animosity. We were working, I was there looking to have a come-to-Jesus moment, where we all left the meeting singing kumbaya on the same note, right? On the same key. So I'm not looking to be a pain in, in the neck to anybody, as, quite the contrary. I went out of my way. I took time out of my day that I didn't get paid for, okay? To meet with these people on their dime, on their dime, at their place. And I didn't have this kind of animosity when I met with them. I was looking to make an agreement that we could all live with, that the school could live with, that the summer program could live with, that the children could benefit from. And I thought I had that agreement when I left. I was pretty sure. I didn't have it in writing, but I had a man's word. I gave him my word. I expected his word to be good like mine. It didn't happen, it seemed like. So I tried the nice route. Didn't work well for me. Now, time maybe needs to be a little rougher, so that people can understand, there's a problem going on here. I'm not sure what it is. I'm not sure why it exists. I've worked endlessly to try and resolve this conflict between the two. But after a while, I know some of you don't have children, but there's only so long you're gonna be, okay, Junior? Now, don't do that before, Junior, that's it. Go to bed. I'm tired of listening to the same stinking story, right?
I get it. And you've mentioned how in kindergarten, you learned, you know, how to share.
How to share.
But I, yeah, I'm sure you also learned just plain basic respect to talk to people. I get it.
For the first six years, I did. And even in this spring, I did.
I understand. I can hear your tone right now, and it's, it's not right. Just talk to me. You don't have to get aggravated. Just talk to me.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm getting a little, not aggravated, but I'm trying to tell you the facts behind it.
But the louder tone doesn't make your point any clearer.
None of you, no one here, sitting there, has the experience, and the experience that I've had over the past seven years, dealing with this one issue. None of you have wanted to bother to involve yourselves in it. I don't have any children in this camp anymore. I didn't have to involve myself in it. But there seemed to be a conflict that needed to be resolved. And as part of my duty, I thought, as a selectman, was try to resolve conflicts. To the resolution and the peaceful resolution of all parties, you know, uh...
Bill, I totally understand that. I'm just saying your delivery.
But when it doesn't, well, again, you don't have, do you have children?
No.
Uh, okay. After you have a couple, let me know. We'll talk again.
Kathy, you had a, a comment?
Um, yeah. I just, I feel like we spent a lot of time on this, um, and that we could have better put our time towards trying to make sure that, um, the summer program and the administration of the summer program has the resources they need for the program when it's in progress. I guess we knew, I don't know if you recall it, Ed, but we knew there was a conflict. We knew that the principal felt that the deliveries to the school were interfering with the school day. We were trying to negotiate around that. Rebecca was trying to figure out how she could take all the deliveries and drive them down there, and, you know. So, so there is a space issue, and, and what I would throw out to, to my board is, um, take a minute and tour the Bagnall. Because the, um, population there was smaller than when my children went. And my children went there before the addition. And right now, um, there's a lot of things moved in there that are taking up a lot of space. And one of those is the central office IT department, which I did tour. And there's a lot of space being used there for that. I'm not sure why. And in our school, least for the Bagnall, I don't think it specifies, um, that we have to approve them moving a central office facility into our elementary school. So it just happened, um, before we knew about it. And it's a very large space that's being occupied. And I think that all of this back and forth, a lot of it is about storage space for our summer program, which is very beneficial to the families and children of this town. Um, and I don't wanna see it, um, ruined, and I don't wanna see the conflict escalated. So I do feel that as a board, our time would be better spent trying to look into this problem a little more completely. Take a tour of the Bagnall, see, see the space and how it's being used, and, and then we can maybe meet with the parties and, and try and work something out. Because this is not good to have a conflict in our elementary school between the school year use and our summer program, because both are highly beneficial. Um, yes, education, obviously, if push came to shove, would trump a summer program. But I don't see why we can't get this worked out, so that these kind of, um, things don't keep happening. Because they do seem to keep happening, and the debt, the out, the fallout from our doing nothing is conflict within committees and conflict between people that are managing the summer program and this principal. And that'll be the next conflict. We'll see if we don't get involved and start to try and, um, work out a solution to this.
Hey, um, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Dan, go ahead.
So, Bill, in, in, in summary, you did nothing wrong, and you justified in what you said and how you did it. And going forward, I don't have the crystal ball, but you might. You would do it again under the same circumstances.
I will call out anyone anywhere that, um, is seemingly taking advantage of the young or the old. Yeah, I, 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 that's just in my DNA, I guess. I can't, I can't stand to be, to stand by and watch those two segments of society abused, exploited in any way, shape, or form. That's just me. Some people can. I just can't.
All right. Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion. I voted no the first time. I'm gonna vote no the second time. I make a motion to remove, uh, for, uh, um, just, uh, lack of demeanor, and, uh, and just crossing the line on your use of rhetoric in the meeting, um, and, uh, for those reasons specifically, okay? Because it's unacceptable to me. That's my motion, and, uh, it's up to the rest of you guys if you wanna do any of that or not.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? The motion was to remove, uh, Bill from the, Bill O'Neill from the Recreation Committee. A motion and a second. Any comments? We're ready for a vote. All in favor? Three in favor, pause. Two. The vote is to remove from Recreation Committee.
Ladies and gentlemen, do you have a final word?
We have the authority to do that.
You appointed him.
This is the kind of political vengeance that you...
There he goes.
It's not.
Not an elective position. It's a... Okay, uh, we roll call out of executive session?
We're not in executive.
What's that? Oh, no, we're not in executive session. Thank you.
I see the kind of government you get.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. Second, thank you, Mike. All in favor of adjournment? Jason? Listen to adjourn.